We call this meeting to an end. This is the regular session of the American Council of the City of Bisbee, California, from Chiefs, and the State of Arizona will be held on Tuesday, February 19th, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the City Hall Building on Street, 915 Toberville Road, Bisbee, Arizona. Ms. Cornutt, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gabe Lindstrom?
Here.
Councilmember Joni Giacaminho?
Aye.
Councilmember Bill Higgins?
Here.
Mayor David M. Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns?
Here.
Councilmember Joan Hanson is excused. Councilmember Anna Klein?
Here.
City staff, Ashley Coronado, city clerk, Carrie Bagley, finance director, Daniel Duchan, personnel director, Alberti Chave, police chief, George Castillo, fire chief, Aldo Redunio, city attorney.
Thanks, ma'am. For our moment of silence, I'd like us to actually reflect on the reason that a lot of us are here tonight, and that is in sympathy and camaraderie with our brothers and sisters to the south, and so if we take just a minute and reflect upon that. Thank you. This is our first meeting in this particular space, and down the road, we will be changing this. It'll be in the same complex, but probably a different building, but this is what we've got for right now, so as cold as it is, hopefully it won't be too warm in here. I do want to thank the Bisbee bloomers for bringing the plants and livening up, literally, lighting things up for us. They brought them to both buildings and brought a whole bunch of them, and they're quite nice, and I'd like to acknowledge that and thank them for their consideration. We do not have a flag up, so we're not going to pledge our allegiance, and I have no proclamations this evening. I will be making a couple of changes, however, on the agenda, because I know that people are here in reference to item number eight, I'm sorry, seven, which is the resolution. I'm going to move that up, and it's going to be the first item under new business. Okay? So with that, we will move on to the call to the public. The first speaker is Keith Dennis. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, my name is Keith Dennis. I'm here on behalf of CEGO, Southern Arizona Governments Organization, and Community Development Block Grant Program. Just wanted to give you a little update on Tin Town, and I just printed one of these off, so I'll just have that out, and you guys can have a look at it. By now, everybody's seen the burn of the detention base in the tin town. City crews are putting riprap on there as we speak, which is great. We held a successful second round of bidding on this on February 8th, and we did get a responsive bid. Your next council meeting, you're going to have a potential award and contract for that successful bidder, that'll be on March 5th. So that's phase one and phase two. What I wanted to talk to you guys tonight about is a potential phase three, a little bit out of the scope of what CEGO would normally do. I wouldn't normally be here at a council meeting, but there's a lot of wind in your sails for potential phase three. Right now, the state is getting ready to announce their notice of ending availability for what's called the State Special Projects CDG Grant. That is something that is every year, it's up to $300,000 in funds. It's a quite competitive statewide competition, but they do award them, and what's required to be competitive for one of these applications is that a city or town or county have a project that is shovel-ready, the environmental review's done, archaeology's done, the plans are in place, you know, ready to go, and recent and good cost estimates are also very important. Also important is matching funds, and the more you pledge of your own funds, the higher you will score. It also goes off of your performance on Pats grants and OCS grants, which you happen to have an open CDG project right now in Tin Town for phase two, which is what I just passed out, that is performing way ahead of schedule right now. So it's going to look good. Your Pats grant that just ended last fall looks good anyways. Point is, wind in the sails. So my boss, Byn Williams, suggested that one of us come to the meeting and just make the city council aware of this opportunity that's going to be coming. It would be great if the city wanted to take, I mean, these plans and the cost estimates and the recent bid that we got, the stuff is fresh out of the oven. It's competitive stuff right now, so the opportunity is there. If there was a way to find some matching funds somewhere to pledge, maybe Freeport, maybe some other source, that could really put it over the top, and I think you'd have a competitive application. If you look at that set of plans there, I've kind of highlighted, you can see the main street going down, like, in the middle of Tin Town. That's the base bid. It's going to carry floodwater through, it's going to be constructed new streets with curvy gutter, valley gutter. There wasn't enough money to do, there's going to be, through the alternates and little side streets that are probably going to come up. They've been recommended for building by the engineer, but if you look at alternate six on there, all the way up by Highway 80 and the W.P. Roadhouse in Eagle Oasis, that whole area is alternate six. Alternate five is an enhanced drainage structure at the hour. I won't get into this stuff too much, but the point is, with a little bit more money in Bisbee's hands, you guys could see this project through and get the streets constructed. The applications are typically due in the middle of June, so there's some time. If the city wants to pursue something like this, you know where to find us. We're around. If you decide not to, at least you knew about it. That's the point. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
No, no, I appreciate your time. Thank you, and I will be at the executive, CEGO executive meeting Friday.
Unless it gets snowed out, right?
Unless it gets snowed out, and perhaps you and I can talk about this then.
We're here for you guys, okay?
Thank you, sir. Thank you. You know, Covington McBride? Welcome.
Thank you, the evening. I just wanted to start by just saying thank you so much for putting the resolution on the agenda for this evening. I would like to speak to, I spent a few days and seven phone calls trying to get information about the razor wire on our border fence, and questions that I'm trying to get answered. I finally got sent around from Washington, D.C., to Phoenix, to the Naco Brian Terry Station, to Tucson, and I reached Mr. Jacob Steubenberg, who is a community liaison for the Tucson sector. And the questions that I'm asking, and I haven't received an answer yet to these questions, and I'm announcing that I want to answer any of the questions, and so I'm waiting. I have to look in writing, yeah, for two. These are the questions, and I'd like to bring them up here to this council, to our community, because I really think it's important to have these answers as beautiful, maybe beyond the resolution. So the first question was, how was the decision to string razor wire on the border fence at the Naco border entry made? Was it made unilaterally by the port agent in charge at the Brian Terry Station? If not, who did the Customs and Border Protection collaborate with or get input from before making the decision to install the razor wire? My third question, since we know that razor wire has safety implications, was the Naco fire department involved in the decision-making process? I believe they're the first responders if someone is injured, and then following, they wait for the Bisbee Fire Department and the UNTs to arrive. Was the Co-Chief Sheriff's Department involved in the decision? Was the Bisbee Police Department, or the Bisbee Mayor, or the city council involved in the decision? My fourth question is, what company was contracted which to purchase the wire? Five, have there been any studies conducted about injuries that razor wire may cause? Six, is there a plan to install more razor wire on the border fence, and how far will it extend beyond the Naco border venture? Seven, if a group of citizens and community leaders wishes to meet with the Customs and Border Protection officials, who are the decision-makers regarding strengthening the security of our border fence about the concerns we have, who can we meet with? And can you provide me or us with a contact name and a phone number? As I was looking into this, I went, do I have a timeline?
You do, you just went.
Okay. I have 30 seconds. Well, if anyone would like to see this, I have actually some data from Trauma Center regarding what happens to a person when they fall on razor wire.
Thank you. Cindy Conroy.
Hi, Cindy Conroy, Six O'Eight Shack. So first off, first chance, I've been here with a newly-elected representative, so congratulations on your job. I personally believe you're doing what you've been elected to do. You had a great meeting, I understand, this Saturday, you're definitely forward, good planners, you're really bright people, you're local, and I'm happy to see you on the council. So I am here to talk about item number four, which I did attend at the Bisbee meeting the other day, the last week, and I'm asking you to vote against elevating the visitor center manager to a department head, which I believe is the gist of what you will hear presented later. In my opinion, you had 20 folks apply for a position as it was first published. That should tell you that there was a great deal of interest at that salary and as the job was described. So you can spend a lot of time tweaking things all day long. I've been in the tourism industry in Bisbee for 30 years, so I think I know a little bit about what can make success. I was in great partnership with the city of Bisbee for a long time, and no partnership in some of the recent years. But what I think is necessary, and if you look at bed tax over the last three years, you will see that it has gone down, and I hope that some of those stats will be printed by the observer, because they're kind of eye-opening, given that we're losing the 1%, and given that there's going to be, if you make a department head out of tourism, the minimum cost will be, with my calculations, is about $70,000. Sure, if the salary's 45 or 50, or 55, needs a college degree, and is going to turn us all into successful people, but that aside, it's really a $70,000 project, which I personally think would be better served by hiring, as I've always thought we needed, a community development director. We need a city manager, and you can put all of this on hold until you have that person, because that person will have talents in one direction or another. So you need a city manager. You know that, I know that. That person can do a lot of things, like personnel and all kinds of other things that were done by Justin Johnson and Pocket before him, so I would hope that you would save this if you have to. Otherwise, I suggest you need a community development director for $70,000-plus, who would have tourism under them, a tourism visitor center person, a manager. A person would work part-time even, a part-time person at $20 an hour, which Bisbee Bug Inc. has, makes $23,000 a year, if you make it $25,000 a year. So you have lots of people with lots of talent in this town, and I just think that we, at this stage in our game, need to say, what's the best, most efficient, best bang for our buck? And I personally think, in tourism, knowing what it means, because someone loves Bisbee, loves tourism from a bed stuff.
Thank you, Ms. Cornutt.
You name it, I would just recommend that you save us some money and
Thank you, Ms. Cornutt.
Have a bigger plan. Thank you.
Is it Charlotte? Is it?
Charlotte.
LaPoisette, LaPoisette?
Yeah, LaPoisette. Welcome.
I am Charlotte LaPoisette, and I'm the board chair.
Can I speak up?
You can speak up. You can take that off.
I'll straighten out. I'm here basically to show my support for the council in regard to the letter. New Smith wrote to the observer on February 14th. I don't normally become involved, but I wanted to show my support for Joni as one of War Two, and Joni Hanson, who is now here. And I just wanted to say that I support them, I do know some of the other members, and I support them as well. The things I wanted to basically call attention here are the well-written article, also in the same paper, by Donna Pulling in regard to the sewer and garbage fees, and I would really love to have you consider that the contents of that piece that she wrote, the 1% sales tax, which she stances in the, let's see, 1978, 1% sales tax collected to be transferred from the general fund to the sewer and garbage funds, and perhaps that would solve the dilemma that's currently facing the city. That was the number one item that I wanted to actually write it to. The third item, more quick, is the razor wire and razor wire damage environmentally to the animals that, you know, through no fault of their own, you know, come across the border. They have trails, deer, birds, you know, and then the human beings, you know. Is it really, are we really reduced to World War I tactics in regard to keeping people out of our country? I just, I'm appalled, and I wanted to express a deep desire to rectify the situation as best we could. You know, I don't see the need for it, and I'd like us to be a city where we can make a statement that is peaceful and, you know, exhibits some humanitarian effort. And I thank you for your time. I'm hoping you can respond to this.
Thank you, ma'am. Tamara Birch.
Good evening. Good evening, Pam. Okay, good. My name is Tamara Birch, I live in War Three, proud to have Gabe and Anna, my representatives, and thank you all for doing your jobs, and please do with your head and your heart together. I tell that to my kindergarteners, so we work beyond this in some ways. So my concerns, first of all, I didn't know the difference between a resolution and proclamation, so I was going to thank you for the proclamation, resolution's going to come later, so thank you for that. So basically, I was part of Valentine's Day gathering down at the concertina wire, razor wire, and it was sad, yet heartening that there aren't community cares about this. So my motto is, do no harm, love thy neighbors, and I think all of us can agree that's basic values that we uphold. So basically, that was my main thing. Thank you for dealing with this and coming out with a statement. The second thing is transparency. Now that we're in a new place, I don't know how long we're going to be here for a city hall, but I would love to have this televised and on our channel, TV, happen again, so if like two council members maybe put that on the agenda, and I don't know about the IT and what's available, but boy, it'd be nice for a lot of people just to be able to sit there after dinner and listen to it, rather than run away from their husband and not practice. All right, thank you so much.
Excuse me, can that sound be improved? It's really bad.
We did, I heard it, but it's not okay back.
It's a good sound.
I'm sorry.
It's magnetic, I don't want to sound bad.
If you will move on to accounts payable.
How much would we pay accounts payable in an amount of $121,738.86?
I'll second. Do we have questions, council?
I guess I kind of have a
Just in
Oh, yeah. I have, my question first is on page four. Just for clarification, there's a sewer and garbage service for the cemetery. What do we, what do we do at the cemetery that requires sewer and garbage? Is there, do they have garbage cans there for trash, and do we, we don't have sewer there, right? I'm just curious what the charge and why it would be at the cemetery.
I think it probably is just for, for the sanitation. I think probably they clean up, you know, dead flowers and things like that, and then throw the trash there. There wouldn't be any sewer there that I know of.
I was just curious, because they had a charge, it's like regular sewer fee. On page five, down under parks, and I, you know, we ask this almost every week about the water, and I understand at the Vista, you guys use that to fill, to go clean and such, but again, you have barfield and choosing $117, and there's no toilets, and then you have grassy park and kid at $264. Is that meat not being fixed, or is there some other source, has there been another vandalism going on? Because that's, again, that keeps coming up, and I, I understand, like you said, I understand the Vista and that, because you guys use that to water and such, but those two, it seems excessively high for the water.
Unfortunately, we only have a year for the public works, so we can, if you wish, get an answer and
Yeah, I'm just curious if it's a fracas or something.
And I can compare it to the previous ones and see if it did go up, and we can draw it to their attention and make a judgment.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Byn.
On page two, we have the expense for, for flagrative law in the amount of $9,685. I thought we improved $6,000 on that.
I don't think there was a limit for that, it was just for legal fees for the laundry though, so it just depends on how much work that they put into it.
Anything else? We have a motion, and we have a second, all those in favor of paying accounts payable, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion carried. Moving on to the consent agenda, we will be pulling item D, as I said, David. So there will be items A through C and E and F. Item A, approval of the appointment of Sandra C. H. Smith to the Bisbee Arts Commission. B, approval of the appointment of Linda Hallstaff to the Evergreen Cemetery Committee. C, approval of the appointment of Deborah Fagan to the Evergreen Cemetery Committee. E, approval of a special event liquor license application submitted by St. Patrick Church for an event to be held at St. Patrick's Church Hall, basement located at 100 Quality Hill, Bisbee, Arizona, on Friday, March 1st, 2019, from 6:00 PM to 11:30 PM. Jennifer Rakovich applicants. F, approval of a special event liquor license application submitted by St. Patrick's Church for an event to be held at St. Patrick's Church Basketball Court, located at 100 Quality Hill, Bisbee, Arizona, on Friday, September 13th, 2019, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Jennifer Rakovich applicants. Council, does council wish any of these pulled for further discussion? Here is not a hidden motion.
We approve the consent agenda, items A through C and E and F. Second?
Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Cornutt?
Councilmember Lindstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacaminho?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. All this is item three. Discussion on possible approval of ordinance O-19-01, admitting Article 5.2.4, CM Zone, Division 2, adding cocktail lounges and taverns to permitted uses. And this is the second reading, and does the council have any questions?
I guess I want clarification on something, I think I misunderstood. So with this, the zoning like it's stating, does that then bypass them having to come to us for a liquor license?
No.
So they're still going to have to come for a liquor license?
Absolutely. Nobody, we can't pass anything to bypass that.
Right.
All this is doing is, is changing the zoning that's already there, allowing, which presently doesn't allow these establishments to allow the establishments, but they still have to come to council, they still have to advertise, they still have to pass all of the other Any questions? Do we have a motion? I move to approve ordinance 0-19-01 in the Article 5.2.4, CM Zone, Division 2, adding cocktail lounges and taverns for permitted areas, permitted uses.
Is second?
Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second.
Council?
Ms. Cornutt?
Councilmember Lindstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacaminho?
Nay.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Nay.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes by two.
Forty-two.
Forty. Forty. Record's correct. Okay, we're going to then go to item four.
No. Seven.
Well, I was going to move it. Yeah, we'll move that. We'll go to item number seven. Discussion on possible approval of Resolution R-1903, denouncing the use of concertina wire as an unauthorized border-crossing deterrent by the federal government along the U.S.-Mexican border. I was contacted by some citizens, I followed the I followed the, the situation in Nogales and in Tucson, supporting Nogales. And I discussed this with actually a couple of people and mayors in Sonora. And I felt it was necessary to, although we weren't technically a border city, for us to show support by providing a resolution. And so the resolution is in the package. It's been put on the website. And I'm asking that that resolution be passed. And do we have discussion before? Okay, I'll tell you what, let's, let me make the motion to pass this resolution. And if we have a second, then we'll open up the discussion. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second. It's not open for discussion. Mr. Higgins.
Yeah, I would like to see this expanded just a little bit. There are sixteen states that have, that have sent the federal government over this emergency declaration. And I know there's probably no chance of this, but if we could include maybe a request to the governor's office to include Arizona in those sixteen states, maybe we could put that in here also. I'd like to see that happen.
Okay. Any further discussion?
My question would be, what does it mean to denounce it? You know, what, what action does that require? What can we do? I'm all for it. That's not for the wire, for the cross the nation, but what does that mean in, in action words?
In, in, in lay terms, it's indicating that we, or indicating that it is something that we are against, that we're denouncing it, we're against it occurring.
Kind of shows solidarity, I think, with the other councils too. You know, that we're jumping on the ground when we've got the defiance.
Might get that, but it's something that we can actually do rather than just say. What would you, what, what would we do is just say, but I'd, I'd like to see what we can actually do.
What would you like to do, sir?
I don't know. Well, I can't, this comes to me in the moment. I don't know, think about it. Maybe anything.
I think one of the things that would be nice to do is maybe talk to the residents of Naco because most of them, from my understanding, and I may be wrong, correct if I'm wrong, but we're thrilled with the razor wire, is maybe talk with them and draft some kind of request to have it removed, I think. Wasn't Nogales going to do that also? Were they moving to try to have their razor wire? And I think Bill's idea would be too.
Well, first of all, Nogales did, and being a border city, they had a holding to do that. Where, where we have no holdings.
Right, that's what I'm saying, you know, maybe we can band together with Naco because not.
That would actually be with the county then. Because Naco is unincorporated.
Right, but even so.
I think the point is just to think of some ideas, you know, as a, as a city, something that we can do rather than say.
So are you, are you suggesting that this not be passed and we do something?
That's not what I said at all.
I don't understand what you said.
Mayor Naco recommendation, Eldor Dino for the city attorney's office. Currently before council is this resolution. So, so your vote should pertain to the resolution. If you want to amend the resolution to include Councilmember Higgins' recommendation, then, then somebody can, can either withdraw the current motion on the, on the floor and amend, offer an amended motion. You can do that. But to take further action, if there are no ideas right now that Councilmember Lindstrom is suggesting, you can always think about what other ideas you want to do and bring those back at a later date. But I, I want to just make sure you understand that currently before you is the, the present resolution. So if there's other action you want to take in the future, you may want to make that the subject of another, another meeting so that you have notice to the public.
Yeah, I, I would like to amend this to include, let me see, I might need some help with this. I'd like to amend this to, so that states that we urge the governor and the attorney general of Arizona to join with the sixteen other states that are suing the federal, federal government over the emergency declaration.
So i- is the mayor withdrawing the pending motion?
No, I will accept the amendment.
Okay, so.
But do we have a second? Must also accept.
I accept that.
Okay, so now you're voting on the amendment to include Councilmember Higgins' request to the governor.
We're, we're voting on the, we're voting on this and including the amendment on one vote, yes. So it's been, the motion's been made in second, so.
Yes.
Okay. We need, it's second to your amendment. Oh, you're good. Somebody's had a second.
I believe.
No, Leslie signs the agreement. Accepted, yeah, accepted the amendment.
I'll second the amendment.
Now we're good. All right. Ms. Cornada.
Councilmember Lindstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacominio.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item number four, possible, or, yeah, item possibly number four. Discussion on public input and possible approval of an updated visitor center tourism director job classification. Mr. Duchamp. We also have Mr. Stern signed up to speak. Mr. Duchamp, would you like to do the intro?
Yes, Mayor Council. So this is the second iteration, as we've been talking about remapping the visitor center manager job description. Last week presented on a potential title of tourism and marketing manager. And Thursday, I met with the Ibisbee Committee and we, we had some business owners there, the Ibisbee Committee, and we kind of brainstormed, collaborated and came up with their vision for, for this position. And that would be the tourism director. It differs from the visitor center manager and tourism marketing managers. It's a director role position and has the education requirements, being that knowledge and skills required for that and the, 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 the,
Thank you. Mr. Stern. Don't travel too far. Welcome, Mr. Stern.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor and Congress, it's a delight to be here. I'm Stanley Stern, a resident for thirty-one years aboard three and gave listeners name. The Ibisbee Committee, at the request of the council, met on Thursday of last week, thankful to Kathy Snowden's Rolex using the older world term. We were able to contact a number of members of the business community. So we had approximately twelve members of the business community join the Ibisbee Committee at our meeting. Well, the process we used was to go through the job description point by point and make changes. We were fortunate enough to have Jen Lurie with us, who also could advise us on changes that were made. The committee unanimously felt that the position should be moved to become the director of tourism, reporting to the city managers. That resulted in a different wage salary increase under using the city's job descriptions and salary schedule. It took us from a community development person at thirty, thirty-nine thousand, two sixty-five to a community development director at forty-six thousand, six thirty-eight. That's a difference of seven thousand, four dollars. Our feeling was that the community development director was responsible for bringing serious revenue to our city and also that tourism was a major industry of our city. Based on that, we felt that the position should be a director's position and should move forward at that level. And we stand ready to ask the answer to your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Stern. I, I do, for clarification, this job would be a director's job and would this then necessitate a, a visitor center employee being hired?
It would not, Mr. Mayor. As part of the job description would be supervision of the visitor center. The Ibisbee Committee will be meeting in March to discuss tourism and we will come back to the council with some suggestions regarding that tourist visitor center.
All right, sir. I have, we have a few other questions of other people, but does, does the council have any questions, Mr. Stern? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it very much. Ms. Bagman, where are we in reference to the money that is presently in the budget till the end of the year available as it fits with this proposed increase in salary?
So we use about fifty percent of the salary and benefits for a visitor center supervisor manager, nineteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars in salary and, and then the benefits also. So I think if I were to, you know, if somebody were to be hired like immediately and I figured out the remaining payroll periods that are left, somebody could theoretically be hired at thirty-one dollars an hour and, and equal to eighty, eighty dollars a year.
So, so it does fit in, of course, we're not, we're not able to hire somebody, as it tomorrow. So there would be that, that gap also. So the money is in the budget is the bottom line, this year's budget.
This year's.
Obviously, it would have to be allocated for next year, but, so we know where the money is coming from for this, should it pass. Excellent. Does anybody have any questions, Ms. Bagman?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make one more comment, if I may.
All right.
We had excellent, excellent help from Dan Duchay of the city's human resource director as we worked through this project. I'm only sorry that he's leaving city's employee project.
Thank you.
Here's my question, as he mentioned, so did he start at forty-six thousand or that's just? I mean, I guess I'm not happy with the range and just, you might not like that, but when you look at the range of all the city workers in town, just, you know, if you were telling to hire somebody at sixty-nine thousand, that just seems like, it seems pretty high to me when you have, you know, police chief and police chief, fire chief, maybe about the same amount.
That's why it's a director's position. It's a, it's a department head position, it's not a, it's, it's not a lesser position.
It's my opinion.
I'm, I'm sorry?
It's just my opinion.
Okay. That's a good opinion. I was trying to explain why they brought that forward.
And I, you know, as we, you know, there's already been thirty, or how many applicants have we had already on the old?
For a clerical job.
In, for the visitor center manager, thirty-three received.
The job description wasn't.
Easy in the, where, where.
But we can still have, you know. Okay.
For clarification, the thirty-three were for the old job description, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. And there is a difference in the job description, so some of those thirty-three, A, may not be eligible, may not fit the criteria, or may not want it, but.
I, I mean, I kind of agree with Ms. Conroy here too, where it seems like our priorities are a little out of whack here. I mean, we have some critical roles to fill that, you know, could possibly be helping find these people also, you know, finding their skill sets. You know, so I'd say that city managers are, should be our top priority right now.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
We were just asking about the money that's left in the budget.
Yes, ma'am.
So is that, is that going to deter when a person would be brought on or are they going to be brought on under different financial circumstances?
No, the money is in the budget.
So there is enough.
There is enough in the budget right now that under this proposal that passes, there's enough money in the budget because Ms. Lurie has been galling long enough that that money has been sitting there. But obviously, it would be an increase next year's budget.
So I guess another question I have, as you guys said, there was thirty-three applicants for the prior, for the prior position. Are any of those thirty-three qualified for this position? Do you know? Did I say that loud enough? Sorry.
Yes, I, after the first review of the visitor center manager, there were about eight that were qualified for the manager role position. And I notified them that the job description would be changing from the main in twenty-five-ish. I advised them that their application wasn't moving forward because either way, they would recall that position.
So since this is, has been changed, will you be reopening it with a different job description or are you just going to go with the original?
I'd like to reopen it again.
Sure.
Because it's more pointed, it's pointed in some areas and more broadly in others. And so I have to be fair as well, since it's a, it's a completely different position.
I just have a comment.
Yes.
I, I said this last week, but, and like personally, I would rather see a community development director, but if this is what you guys want and this is what you guys have brought to us, I understand that I'm working for you and I represent you. And so I've taken it, I've taken it in and that's just what I want to tell you. So I've heard, I've heard, I've heard what you've said.
Ms. Klein?
I really think we need a community development director. We talked about that in our strategic planning meeting. I think Councilman Lindstrom is correct. We have so many critical positions that need to be filled right now. And this is right before we get into the budget process. So I think trying to do this right now, this time, is probably not a good idea because if we have the money now, we don't know if we're going to have it come the budget time because, because of what came about in that meeting that we had and the, the critical positions that we really need to fill first. So I think we really need to. It may be critical, yes.
Ms. Soudin, please.
But they're all critical.
No.
And.
Ms. Soudin, I'm warning, second warning.
And I think that, you know, first we need to get our C M. aboard and I really do think we need to look at community development. I don't see making this position a department chair. It never has been. So I, I think we really need to look at this.
Okay, what is the council's?
Just one last comment. It's not that I'm, I'm agreeing with the Ibisbee as far as we create this, you know, if we were to do it, but I just think it's the wrong time at the moment because of the C M. and the city attorney. But I would definitely take the recommendation to do it at the right time and, you know, to pay it there and then, because that's what it.
Can I mention something?
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to mention that the one percent of that tax that funds this position can only be used for things that come on tourism.
Does, does that include the salary?
The, the salary, advertising, everything, everything that the one percent or the, I'm sorry, the three point five percent vent tax can only be used to tourism.
Right, so this is, this isn't a general fund obligation. Thank you for that clarification. All right, I'm going to move this along and. All right, I'm going to move this along, um, and, um, I move to approve the updated visitor center tourism director job classification.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a suggestion? Last week we had the tourism and marketing manager. These are only job classifications. We can have a dozen of these on the books and then come budget time, then you can decide what you want to fund as well. So this is only a piece of paper.
Correct.
So with that said, so if, if it was to pass, what's the soonest you're going to hire this person, the budget comes around with that statement? Then what happens if you don't think so?
That would be up to the, up to the city manager.
You would have to have a city manager to hire them.
Mm-hmm.
Your passing-
Just a job description.
Yeah, it's a job description that you pass.
Um, may I say one thing? The, the way your, um, your proposed motion is on this agenda item is I move to approve the job classification for tourism director, including removal of visitor center, senator, um, center manager job classification. So I'm not sure if that's part of your consideration, but I, I'm just pointing that out because that's how the motion is drafted on here.
So that would be in kind of what you just said.
Or you could remove that one, that's an option you have.
Those are two different, you can have, isn't it?
So you, I mean, you certainly can move to approve the job classification he just presented and not do away with the visitor center, center manager job description. I just wanted to point it out.
Does it have to be amended like the previous?
Right now, as it stands, I think the motion is just to approve the tourism director job classification as amended. There was no mention of the visitor center manager job classification.
That was correct. And it's apparently dying for life and saving.
So the current motion is to approve the, the current job classification for tourism director?
Yes. Here's- I'll say it there. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by stating aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign? Nay. So it's three to three.
No. Four to two.
Maybe, maybe take a roll call.
It was, I've, I've got one on each side of me saying aye, so I, that's three, that's three.
Shit, Joni off.
Well, I, that's a problem, we're all sitting like this. So it's four to two, approved, passed. Thank you. Okay, and item number five. Discussion of possible approval of a contract for services with Washington Federal for banking services, merchant services, and employee purchase cards. Ms. Bagley.
Um, Mayor Council, this is a contract, um, for services with, um, Washington Federal. Um, they put out an R F A for banking services in October and we received three responses. Uh, one from Wells Fargo currently bank with and also Washington Federal Western.
Carrie, sorry. Um, can you hold on a sec because everybody's having a hard time hearing? Can we just wait till they leave? Can you start over, sorry about that? And speak into the mic? I'll just get it all out there since I-
You can pull it out.
You can pull it out.
Do you know any good songs while you're at it?
So we, we put out a request for proposal in October and three banks responded. There was, um, Wells Fargo who, Fargo who we currently bank with, um, Washington Federal and Western Bank. And of the three, we determined that Washington Federal provided the, the services, um, that we needed and would be the best for the city.
Thank you, so staff's recommendation is Washington?
Washington Federal for, for banking and also for our merchant services, which is processing the credit cards and for employee purchase cards.
Is that like a credit card? All right, anybody have questions, Ms. Bagley?
I, I'm just curious why you chose Washington and not National, I mean, they're both local.
National didn't submit a bid.
Probably didn't.
Western did.
We, Western did. Um, we chose, uh, Washington Federal. Um, we already bank with them for, we have some large savings accounts or debt service accounts over them and we've always seen great, great service from them. And also when they submitted their proposal, um, they let us know that if we, we could keep a certain amount in our account that would cover all of our fees and remainder that we could earn a large return on. And Western Bank didn't submit any kind of information on any kind of return.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
First of all, I'd like to thank you very much for the time you have put into this. I know this has been an ongoing thing and I know that this was a lot of work and I'm very happy that, uh, that you did this and got this done. And it's nice to see a smile on Richie Green's face.
Well, right, Richie and, and several other people brought this forward and the council listened to them, so that's a good thing.
So this is one that Richie's happy with, I mean?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I was curious, because you were one of the ones that initially brought it up.
Well, you're hoping well, you're better. All right, um, I have a motion. I move to approve a contract for banking services, merchant services, and employee purchase card services with Washington Federal. We have a motion, we have a second. Thank you, Ms. Bagley. Ms. Conrad?
So, just one more question, so you said, um, which one did you say that was? National did not, you said?
No, they only received the three, Western, Washington, and Wells.
Ms. Conrad?
Councilmember Lindstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item number six. Discussion of possible approval to retain an attorney to consult with council about the Jacob's contract and all the protests. Ms. Johns?
Um, you know, I, after thinking about this some more, I think maybe this is something we can hold off on because if there is an issue with the contract, the way I think there is, we've got about a year and it may be best to wait until we have a new city attorney secured because the county is running out of the I P A early and so we're looking around at, um, getting new legal representation anyway. And so I think maybe we should just see how that goes and put this off for right now. And I'm open to discussing that, but that's kind of what I'm thinking right now.
Okay, just as a point of clarification, the, um, council voted not to allow the county attorney out and so they're here until, uh, June third.
Yeah. Or until. Or until.
Are you moving to table the item?
Yeah, I guess I, I'm going to, well, just, can I just put a question? No, it's about table.
Hold on, I, I, I'm hesitating because I believe tableing necessarily will affect the next meeting. According to, um, the, the charter, I believe, it, that it can, it is tabled until the next meeting. I do believe that, and so that's, Ms. Johns, that's the only reason I'm going.
Okay, okay, no.
Um, you, well, you, you have to table for a date certain.
Okay.
Or, um, so, if you don't, if you don't table for a date certain, then it has to be re-agendized and the whole process. So if, if it's, if you don't want to table it for the next meeting, you, you at least want to-
I have to pick a, a certain date?
Right, or, or just note that it will be noticed for future agenda and you'll have to re-notice, give the twenty-four hour notice and all that jazz.
Okay, yeah, and I'm willing to do that.
Is, is that your understanding, Mayor, or, or am I misinterpreting what you're saying?
Not positive, that's correct. Respect, but, um, I'm wondering if, um, to make it cleaner, if we can't just, uh, at the request of the person, put it on there, it just be forwarded for consideration.
Can I ask, can I ask for clarification, so?
Yeah, well, we had a number of people.
No, 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 it's on, it's on the, the table, you think. I, I, is there any way you can get that clarified for us because of us, as the process of table? Because, um, is it a specific, or does the charter specifically state? Because that's, that's a clarification that is kind of illiberal to us.
I, I'm, I'm of the, I think, I think that they have it there, but I'm of the impression it says until the next meeting. Ms. Mayor?
Um, I thought we could table to a specific date or we could table indefinitely, which is what Mr. Durney was telling me.
I can, I can read it to you, it says, motion to table, the purpose of this motion is to temporarily bypass the subject. A motion to lay on the table is undebatable and shall preclude all amendments of debate of the subject under consideration. If the motion prevails, the matter may be taken from the table at any time prior to the end of the next regular meeting.
So lay on the table is it has to go to the next meeting, but to table, it can be indefinite. Is that what I heard?
It's the same thing.
Well, he's, he's telling me it's the same thing, although, but I feel like I heard two different things.
Well, quite frankly, this doesn't make any sense to me. Um, the, the, honestly, I, I'm having a hard time interpreting this, so I don't think I can give you a decision at this point.
That was the, the reason I asked, because any other, and again, that's why I was asking pertinent to the, to the charter. In, in other situations, if you could put a date on the table. And that's why I wanted to clarify by you as far as per the charter. Is it, if you table it, you have to then each meeting re-table, re-table, re-table? Or can you table and say table for three months and then in three months it's revisited?
At, at this stage, I, maybe I would, uh, recommend doing what the mayor said and just pull it and, and when you're ready to bring it back, you can bring it back.
Okay, well, if, unless you guys want to talk about this, I'm in favor of pulling it right now.
Could we have clarification later down the road though?
Uh, yes, I, I will look into that for you.
Thank you.
No, she's just, she's got her mind, she's going. Okay, and, no city manager? Thank you, thank you. And all those in favor, if you're, if you're standing by, aye. Aye, a vote on the same side.